Welcome to West Covina. Thank you, somebody said thank you? You're welcome. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Debbie Martin. I am the Chief Deputy at the Registered Recorder County Clerk. Thank you for being here tonight. This is our fifth and final public hearing on our Los Angeles County's Election Administration Plan. Everybody can hear me okay? It feels weird. Okay. First, I want to thank the City of West Covina for the use of this beautiful facility. Look at this nice room. Even have an ocean breeze, hill breeze. Sorry, I'm not near the ocean. And second, I want to thank Supervisor Hilda Salisa's office for assisting our team with coordinating of this facility for our hearing as well. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So, thank you very much for that. Is that me, or Johnny, or you? Okay. As long as it's not me. So, now, I think, is the time for us to sort of open up the hearing. And the purpose of this is, we want to present and discuss our Election Administration Plan. Hello? Yes, we're going to discuss it, and you're going to help us. So, the draft plan that we have, we posted to our website on October 9th. If you aren't aware, LAvote.net. Again, LAvote.net. So, the draft is actually posted under our VSAP heading. You'll find it there. So, if any of you are interested, you know, please, you can do it now on your phone, or do it later. So, the EAP is an instrument that describes how LA County is going to strategically plan for outreach and education campaign. Why are we doing this? The Voters' Choice Act. The Voters' Choice Act was passed, and it accomplishes two things. It transitions us from our traditional polling places to what we call vote centers. That's the first thing. The second thing it does is it allows us 11 days of voting instead of one, which we think is pretty cool. So, in addition to the VCA, which is the Voters' Choice Act, LA County will be rolling out our new voting system, which has been a nine-year journey for us to develop and manufacture what we refer to as our voting machines or our ballot marking devices. Ta-da! Right in the corner, with the yellow privacy screen on it. So, these devices are available for you to try. We have staff to assist, and we'd love to have your feedback. That's the whole purpose of you being here, so thank you. So, in preparation for the March 3rd, which is a really big election, as we all know, it's our presidential primary, and they beginning to, and we also need to begin to implement our Election Administrative Plan. So, we held a mock election not too long ago. How many of you went to the mock election? Anybody? Great. Thank you. So, we held a mock election September 20th and 29th at 50 sites through LA County. The one closest to us was Mount SAC. Did you vote at Mount SAC? No? Nope? You did. Got it. Okay, we got some people at Mount SAC. So, that was our biggest site around here. You've, he voted too? Great. Okay. So, and it was over two days, and it allowed us to reach out to our voters and share our new voting system. And just so you know, we had over 6,000 people vote. So, we got a lot of great feedback, a lot of feedback that we are now incorporating, and we appreciate everybody's participation. So, I said earlier that the plan is available on our website, but I think it's also important to let you know that it's accessible in 13 languages. So, that's pretty big. We got 13 languages in LA County. And our, we're open for public comment today. Today's our last day for public comment for the hearings. So, make sure that you get your comments in. And the question, how do you do that? You can do that today here. We have a podium here, and we'll open it up, and we have a job, a card that you can fill out as well. You can do it by calling our number, which is 562-229-6361. You can email us at vsap.rrrcc.lacounty.gov, or you can go through our portal, our VSAP portal. And you've got exactly, well, just under six hours until midnight. So, in the presentation tonight, you're going to see us focus on some key points about our Election Administration Plan. I'm trying not to use all the acronyms we have here. So, all the details, again, are found on the website, so feel free to access that. So, the meeting tonight will be conducted in a true public hearing format. Yes. Exactly. We also ask that you please hold your questions until the public comment portion of the meeting, and that your comments focus on the Election Administration Plan itself. But we have, we don't have a really big group, so if you really just are dying to answer something, please raise your hand, and we'll accommodate. And that goes for the little one, too. If you haven't done so, please fill out a card if you're going to comment. And you can see Melissa or Jelaine here. So, I want to advise you that we are tape recording. You can see in the back. And it will be posted to our website, and we will be documenting all public comments, so we want to make sure that you're aware of that. So, to reiterate a little bit, I wanted to make sure everybody knows our ballot marking devices are available. If you have any questions, let us now know. And now, we're going to be sharing a really cool video that was documented. It was our mock election. I don't know if anybody's seen it. So, it's documenting our preparation, and you know, everything's leading up to this March 3rd election, and it's really important to us.
The machine was pretty good, man. I liked it. I think it's so much faster and easier to just press and click the screen rather than, like, punching something.
It's literally a touchscreen with instructions that are easily understandable.
This is as simple as, like, ordering food at any restaurant, unlike one of those terminals that they have.
Now, it's all incorporated in the one machine, where if you don't want to just do the screen, you have issues hearing, we have audio. If you're blind, we have a touchpad that will help you through the process. So, all those things, so we're covering all the bases of people with all kinds of disabilities.
It wasn't as intimidating to use as, you know, the piece of paper with everything on it, and worrying about, "Am I missing something?"
I thought that the process was very easy, very streamlined, and I think our younger generation will be excited about it, too.
I think they're going to like it more. It's going to change completely. It's like a less, like a different ballgame. The Board of San Diego County should be very excited about their new changes.
I'm now going to turn over the rest of the hearing to our VSAP manager, Monica Flores. Sorry, I wanted to make sure that, that I thank you, and that from Dean and from everybody on the team for your contribution and your feedback, because it is very important to us. With that, I'm going to turn over to Monica. Thank you. I don't know what I did to the screen.
Good evening. Thanks again for joining us. So, you got a quick overview from Debbie on why we're here. I'm going to just give you a little bit more detail. In 2016, Governor Brown signed the California Voters' Choice Act. The Voters' Choice Act, or VCA, really revolutionizes the way that voters engage in the electoral process. In our current model, voters have two options. They can vote by mail, or they can vote in person on Election Day. In the new model, voters can continue to vote by mail. They can also vote, or they can vote at a vote center over an 11-day period. Voters are no longer restricted to going to their one assigned location on a Tuesday. Furthermore, voters have the opportunity to register to vote at any vote center locations and vote at that, on that same day. Now, prior to transitioning to this new model, any county must prepare an Election Administration Plan, which is what we're preparing, where we're presenting to you today. And we're inviting you to comment on. As Debbie mentioned, you can comment here in person, online, or over the phone. Now, this plan covers topics such as our outreach plan, our vote center placement, and election security. We published the plan on October 9th, and today is the last day for public comments. We intend to submit this final plan to the Secretary of State by the end of the year. Now, these expanded options for our voters are, that come with the Voters' Choice Act, are just part of our Voting Solutions for All People, or VSAP. VSAP introduces a completely new voting experience for LA County voters. Voters will have access to new tools for making their voting experience more convenient, accessible, and secure. Some of these new tools include an interactive sample ballot, a ballot marking device, and our, on our end, tools that we will be using to facilitate this are an electronic poll book and a whole new tally system. Furthermore, the ballot for those who prefer to vote by mail has been redesigned to be easier to understand and easier to use. This new vote-by-mail ballot was implemented in November of 2018. The ballot was designed with the support of LA County voters, and we engaged voters with various ranges of disabilities, including voters with limited mobility, dexterity, and vision. It was redesigned to, with the voter experience as its top priority. Additionally, we will be implementing a remote-accessible vote-by-mail solution, which allows voters with disabilities to mark their ballot using their preferred assistive technology. As we mentioned, in the future, voters will have the ability to vote at any vote center in LA County during an 11-day period, providing more flexibility and convenience. We seek to place these vote centers at locations that are easily accessible to voters and conducted a great amount of research to identify where those locations may be. The research was conducted as part of our Vote Center Placement Project, which you will hear a little bit more about today. To gather potential vote center locations, we looked at our current inventory of polling places, we held community meetings, we conducted public surveys, and we established an online suggestion portal. Once at a vote center, voters will be checked in on electronic poll books. These electronic poll books will replace the large voter rosters that you currently sign in when you arrive at a vote center, or at a polling place now. E-poll books will allow us to verify the voter eligibility to participate in an election and to record their participation. They will allow us to verify that a voter has not voted at another vote center or cast a vote-by-mail ballot. E-poll books will also allow us to spoil a vote-by-mail ballot for a voter who has issued one but prefers to vote in person. And finally, e-poll books will allow us to register voters and allow them to cast a ballot on that same day. E-poll books will, we expect to greatly reduce the number of provisional ballots that are cast. Currently, the largest reason for provisional ballots are voters being at the wrong location, which gets eliminated, and voters also who do not have, who were issued a vote-by-mail ballot but don't have it, to surrender. Again, a solution that, or an issue that's resolved with the e-poll book. Also in this new voting experience is the interactive sample ballot. The interactive sample ballot allows voters to view and mark their sample ballot on their computer or mobile device. It produces a poll pass with their selections, which can be easily scanned at a ballot marking device once you arrive at a vote center. This tool can be beneficial to voters who want to expedite their in-person voting experience. It can also be of great benefit to voters who prefer to use their personal assistive technology at home to make their selections and then simply transfer those selections at a vote center, to a BMD. This is an optional tool for voters. It does not replace the need for voters to visit a vote center and mark an actual ballot or to mail in a vote-by-mail ballot. Again, the interactive sample ballot is an optional tool. The final component to this experience is the new VSAP tally system. This new system will be used to scan all vote-by-mail and all ballot marking device ballots. There's a tally system. A little bit more about the ballot marking device. The ballot marking device is designed to be easy to use, accessible, and secure. As Debbie mentioned, we spent many years designing this tool. We brought in voters, iterated to the process, and came up with this final design. The ballot marking device has a touchscreen that allows a voter to mark their selections, or, if preferred, a voter can use a tactile keypad, and voters can use the audio ballot using each one of these interfaces. The voter marks their selections using these tools, but they mark a paper ballot. So, what is produced and counted as an official ballot of record is the paper ballot. No selections are stored or tallied on the ballot marking device itself. It is not connected to the internet or any other network while at the vote center. The device is designed to be accessible to voters for varying physical and cognitive abilities, is designed to allow voters to mark and cast their ballot easily, securely, privately, and independently. Now, I will show you a short video that recaps this whole new voter experience.
The election is just around the corner, and Los Angeles County has a new way for voters to make their voices heard. New Los Angeles County vote centers are located throughout the county. Cast your ballot near your home, work, or favorite park. Voters can go anywhere. To find a vote center that's convenient, visit LAvote.net and find one that works best for you. Instead of waiting for one day to vote, you are now able to vote across 11 days. Once you've arrived, a vote center assistant will greet you and check you in before taking you to the ballot marking device. Did you know that there is a new interactive sample ballot that lets you pre-mark your selections online and generate a poll pass? A unique QR code that will let you quickly transfer, review, and cast your selections on a paper ballot at the county vote center. The new ballot marking device includes an audio ballot, a touchscreen, and a tactile keypad to make voting faster and more accessible. You can also select your language, change the font size, and adjust the contrast for easy viewing. Then, after you make your selections or scan your poll pass, you can review your ballot to verify your choices and cast your ballot by feeding the paper ballot back into the ballot marking device. There's no need to give your ballot to a vote center assistant. You cast it on the same device. Welcome to the future of voting in Los Angeles County. Fast, convenient, and easy. Go to vsap.lavote.net to exercise your right to vote and let your voice be heard.
As you can see, there's a lot of changes coming to the voting experience in LA County, and it's critical that we get this message out to our voters. So, one of the things that we're doing to communicate this message is partnering with the media to share all of these details with the public. So, for that, I am handing this over to my colleague, Tarina, who's going to tell you about our media campaign.
Thank you, Monica. Okay. So, yes, we have a very big message, a large task ahead of us. We basically have to educate over 5.4 million voters and an additional 1 million eligible non-registered voters on all of these changes that we've just talked about tonight. And so, in the EAP, you'll find more detailed information. I'm just going to provide an overview of how we're going to communicate, educate, and promote our message on all the accessibility tools, the new ballot marking device, and where people can go to cast their ballot. Part of our plan is to saturate every media market by utilizing partners we've already established relationships with in past campaigns. And so, one of the biggest elements we've utilized is radio. We'll have on-air radio advertisements, AM and FM, as well as digital platforms such as Pandora, Spotify, and iHeartRadio, in which we have the ability to provide a more targeted outreach. We'll also utilize television through commercials using several big networks such as ABC, CBS, Fox, NBC, cable broadcasting networks, as well as digital media such as websites, phones, and emails. So, we have just over 1.5 million email addresses, so we'll definitely have an email campaign. We'll be utilizing outdoor media, billboards on popular freeways, bus shelter ads, buses themselves will have our messaging signs and branding on them. We'll use print media, newspapers, magazines, and a variety of multilingual, multi-ethnic outlets, direct mailing. So, we'll also provide at least three mailings to every registered voter notifying them of all these changes, where their nearest vote center will be, and the optional tools that are available for them through VSAP, Voting Solutions for All People. This next slide is going to show an example of the type of video clip that will be shown on television, social media, or websites. This video was actually from one of our partners that we utilized in a previous campaign for the mock election that we held in September. And so, this individual represents Coast 103.5. He is a show host with Ellen K., and he's on air in the mornings. And so, this is an example of what we'll be showcasing in our upcoming campaign.
I'm Ryan Mano from the Ellen K. Morning Show on Coast 103.5. You know, LA County has revolutionized the way you vote for the 2020 elections, making it easier and more convenient for everyone to vote. So, the new ballot marking devices all have new adjustable touchscreens to make reading, marking your ballot, and casting your vote completely hassle-free. Adjustable font size, your choice of 13 different languages, an audio headset, and a control pad, which gives you all the tools of simplifying the voting process, which saves you time. All you have to do is show up, make your selections, print, and cast your vote. Boom, done. Plus, over 1,000 voting centers will be available in 2020, and you'll have 11 days to vote at any vote center near you, whether it's near your job school, shopping mall, maybe a grocery store. You can kiss those days of long lines and confusion at your voting center goodbye. To learn more about the new and improved voting experience, go to coast1035.com/LAVote.
So, as you can see, Ryan Mano was one of our celebrity endorsements. And so, what we've learned over the past several election campaigns is that not only is the message that we have very important, but also who's saying that message is equally important. So, when people hear celebrities like Mano or Ryan Seacrest, they're more inclined to respond or retain our message. And so, we will have celebrity endorsements tied to all of our media campaigns to help us promote and amplify our message. Another method, we'll be utilizing our media roundtables. And so, again, we did this leading up to the mock election as well, which we had over 20 media outlets, English and multilingual attend, and we were able to provide them with information where they had a chance to experience the ballot marking device, take pictures, do video clips, and they even had an opportunity to interview our department head, Dean Logan. Some of those benefits are the featured stories that usually come about afterwards. And so, all the information that we provided them and their video clips that they made in their interviews, they're now able to produce it onto their networks. And so, we're going to continue to host more media roundtables, even have more targeted roundtables consisting of different ethnic groups focusing on various demographics. And so, we are then invited and usually included in a lot of their events, sometimes as cosponsors, which gives us an opportunity, again, to bring out our ballot marking device, our outreach teams, and be able to be exposed to hundreds, even thousands, of people. So, now, we'll touch on what we're currently doing to kind of continue the momentum that was started with our mock election, and that's set up demonstration centers. And so, there are 10 of them located throughout the county. It's on a rotating basis. It changes every month, and we'll be having these through January of 2020. And so, what these demonstration centers do is they give us an opportunity to set up in areas where we feel there will be high-volume traffic, people able to come in, experience the ballot marking device, get familiar with it. There's also an e-poll book that will be there, so that they can at least get familiar with it and understand its general use. So, to date, we've participated in over 300 events and/or presentations to different and all various community groups. And so, at these events, again, we bring out our materials, similar to what we have here tonight, provide more information. We also bring out our ballot marking device, as much as we can do to give the public, give our communities, give everyone an opportunity to get more familiar with our ballot marking device and get prepared for March. And so, as we get closer to March, we will be providing and creating materials for people to utilize and share. So, anything that we produce as a department is open for everyone to use. In fact, we want you to use it. We invite you to use these, to use them on your own websites. We'll be developing flyers and postcards. So, they will also be held on our website, so please be sure to check our website at LAvote.net in the upcoming months to find new materials that we'll have available for you to use. And so, to continue in our outreach message, I turn it over to Jeff Klein.
Okay, thanks, Tarina. I'm going to continue discussing more of our engagement, our community engagement, or what we like to sometimes refer to as peer-to-peer outreach, really complements our larger media plan, where the media plan really reaches a much broader audience, millions of people throughout LA County. We do a lot more on the ground. That's more in terms of effectiveness and carrying our message. Peer-to-peer outreach really enhances that and really targets various organizations or different communities that we're interested in reaching out to. So, to reiterate and go into a little bit more detail on that, as Tarina mentioned, we have conducted over 300 VSAP presentations. And these are really for organizations, political, non-political. They can be city groups, city councils, or just unrelated to elections, such as reality groups. And really, those presentations serve as a great way to take our message and then get organizations to then carry that message forward. So, they're a lot more detailed. They provide a lot more information than something like our broader media messages. We've also attended over 500 community events in the last year and a half, and these are community events where we might have tabling and just offer information on VSAP, all the changes around VSAP. It might also be more involved, such as bringing out about marking device, such as the one you see here. And then, any combination of the need for presence at any event throughout LA County. And we're, we literally go anywhere in LA County, up to Lancaster, out to Malibu, out to Pomona, down to Long Beach, and everywhere in between. In general, we collaborate with some very strong partners. We have a very large network we collaborate with. Our consistent partners include about 88, will include all 88 cities throughout LA County, and then about 200 community-based organizations, and I do see some members from those organizations tonight. So, I thank you for coming out and being part of this, this public hearing. So, at a higher level, we like to think of this as collaborative outreach. The outreach philosophy at the department is what we consider partnership-based model. And why that's important is because of the number of people we need to reach in LA County. We have over 5 million voters in LA County, as was mentioned, but really, we have to reach a much larger audience, because there's people who aren't yet eligible to vote and a number of unregistered but eligible voters that are currently eligible. And so, we really have to reach the 10 million residents of LA County. So, depending on partnerships with those organizations, with those cities, as previously mentioned, allows us to really get that message out more effectively. So, we identify our audiences that we're interested in targeting, and that's how we decide where to shift our resources, where to shift our staff, and where to concentrate our efforts. One thing that we also do is we share best practices. As a department, we've been doing a lot of outreach over many years, and especially around VSAP, really intensely over the last couple of years, and we've learned a lot during that time. And that's information we really want to share with organizations to help them be more effective. So, we, we love to get on the phone with organizations or meet with organizations and share our best practices. We created something called a VSAP Ambassador Program as one big example of that. What the VSAP Ambassador Program is for organizations that are interested in taking all the changes out to their community. We've had organizations come into our office, or we'll go out into the field, and we'll train them on how to really promote that message, what are the talking points. So, we can all really be on the same page, and we can all message the same concepts about VSAP that we really want to emphasize. When possible, we try to offer hands-on experience. Nothing provides an experience like hands-on, allows people to retain that information. And I think it really breaks down some of the fears that people have about changes where we incorporate new technologies and things like that. Change is scary for a lot of people, but when you see individuals use the new equipment, you can really see those fears fade away. We also look for opportunities of greater engagement. What do I mean? What do I mean by that? Well, for the mock election, what we did is we contacted our network of cities and hundreds of organizations, and we matched them to various mock sites. So we had 50 mock sites around LA County, organizations that were active, let's say, for example, in Long Beach, we let them know where the mock sites were in Long Beach. Organizations active in Pomona, we let them know where the Pomona sites were and the surrounding vicinity. But of course, there's organizations that are active countywide, so we really tune them into the higher traffic sites, but also let them know all 50 sites around LA County. As mentioned, we're doing a lot of work around demo centers. One thing that's been really valuable with the demo centers is organizations that have meetings can then strategize their meetings around these demo centers. And there's been a number of organizations where after their meeting has ended, they've used the demo site to do some work right after that, to bring all their members over and walk their members through. It's also been a great point of, a great attraction for cities. A lot of our demo sites have been placed in city halls or placed in libraries, places where we already know there's high level of traffic. So cities are able to really use those and rally their community around those and tell, and, and again, we partnered to help, for them to help us get the message out. So they let their residents know, hey, there's a demo site for a few weeks in our lobby. Come out, check it out. Those have been really successful in getting a high level of interaction with the ballot marking device and spreading the word on VSAP. And then we've been looking for greater engagement in terms of town halls. There's been elected officials' offices who've wanted to assemble town halls, some of our board offices have, and other organizations. And the town halls can be thought of half outreach events and half VSAP presentation, where we can bring up many, many people, they can use the equipment, they can find out about all the changes. And sometimes we couple these town halls with other items of interest, such as maybe the census, other things that are going on in LA County, and I think it really helps benefit everybody. So moving on from the peer-to-peer outreach, we also provide a lot of support around non-English languages. We provide full language assistance in Armenian, Chinese, Kamai or Cambodian, Farsi, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, Tagalog, or sometimes called Filipino, Thai, and Vietnamese. In addition, we provide limited assistance, so it would be more spoken language assistance in Bengali, Gujarati, and Urdu. And this language support is really important, especially for a lot of our partners that really work within various multilingual communities. So one thing, we do two things in order to determine how we want to utilize our resources and how we can prep our resources for language assistance and for serving limited English proficiency voters. Number one is we depend on partnerships. There's organizations that have much greater experience and much greater knowledge on language communities. We get input from those organizations. We combine that input with data, and that really lets us know how to develop our resources, everything from messaging and wording to where do we want to distribute those resources and disperse them throughout LA County. We also provide accessibility support for the community. Number of the accessibility services, just at a high level, is enhanced vote-by-mail, our interactive sample ballot, which will be a new feature that Monica mentioned, it'll be the new feature, a new feature that we roll out with VSAP, R A V B M, or Remote Accessible Vote-by-Mail, and the ballot marking device. Of course, accessibility is a main component, as has been discussed. A little more about our improvements to the vote-by-mail ballot. So we, we increased the font, we made it a full-face, readable ballot, easier to read, easier to fill out, easier to understand. Word I like to use is intuitive, it's a lot more intuitive. If you haven't yet seen the vote-by-mail ballot, there's a picture of it, and if anyone would like to see a copy of it as we get closer to the election, we can definitely provide copies of those. We provide them in all the multilingual options. One thing that's new or fairly new, although it took effect in 2018, but you don't need postage to return your vote-by-mail ballot anymore. And we also will be having 150 vote-by-mail drop boxes around LA County. So voters will have three options to return their vote-by-mail ballot. You can walk it into a vote center, you can return via USPS Postal Service, and you can take it into a vote-by-mail drop box, which is essentially like a postal, a postbox, a post office box, but it's a box that we control, very similar to a ballot box. So that is a summary of our community outreach, our collaborative outreach, and our various support that we provide. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Julian, and he's going to talk about the actual vote centers and the strategy that went into obtaining those vote centers.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Julian Capata, and I work for Play Center. We were contracted by the county to help them find over 2,000 potential vote centers and then narrow that down to about 1,000. It was a multifaceted process. We started the process out by conducting a series of focus groups, as well as over 2,500 statistically valid telephone surveys. We reached out throughout the, the focus groups were held throughout the county and included a variety of demographics, differing ages, and ethnicities and languages. And the survey was conducted in English, Korean, Chinese, and Spanish as well. So reached out, and we found that results, basically, people liked the idea of the vote center, but they preferred the idea of voting closer to home. So we, then, in our home office, we had a database of about 10,000 potential facilities that we could use for vote centers. And we started off by conducting what was a desktop review, basically going on to a GIS version of Google Earth and contacting the sites, validating that they had some of the characteristics that we were looking for, as well as willingness to participate. We reached out to several public agencies, all of the clerks of every, of every city in the county, as well as LA County libraries, LA County parks, other agencies to get their input on potential vote center locations as well. As part of this, we also created what was the Vote Center Online Portal, which allowed the public, it was located on the VSAP website and allowed the public to suggest a vote center, to comment on potential vote centers that we had already approved, put into the next stage of evaluation. And that received over 1,700 different comments and edits. We also held over 67 outreach meetings, coordinating with several community-based organizations as well. We held 30 before we made our final selection, and 30 after. The before was, again, to solicit input on the best locations for vote centers, some characteristics. And then the, the meetings after the selections had been made was to inform people of the process, as well as, again, get some more input on how, what was important in a vote center. The heart of the process was the field review and the creation of a site suitability tool, and I'm going to go into that in a little bit more detail right now. Our staff, in a period of about six months, covered over 2,300 facilities throughout the county, drove over 20,000 miles, looked at about 4,000 facilities, and this was a mix of regular facilities, libraries, I'm sure one of my staff members was at this library, but also non-traditional sites, such as shopping centers, strip malls, vacant building, or vacant places within some of these ship malls, things like that. And we received pretty good success. About 84% of the facilities we visited were, were seen as suitable. A big part of the field review was to make sure that these sites met the basics for ADA accessibility. We went out there with levels, making sure that ramps were, met the right sloping, yardsticks to measure doorways, make sure wheelchair, that were wheelchair accessible. We're also just verifying things like room sizes and parking and things like that. We fed this all into a database, and then the facilities that were accepted were put into the Vote Center Site Suitability Tool. That was a program, basically, that looked at the criteria of the Voter Choice Act, and then in coordination with the county's Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as their Technical Advisory Committee, we determined what the appropriate weighting is for each of those categories. So the Voters Choice Act says that, you know, you make sure that vote centers are located near populated areas, make sure that people who are coming home from work have the opportunity to work, make sure that no communities are excluded. So we provided a weighting for each of the, of those criteria and came up with, of those 2,000, what we, what we considered to be the best 1,000, the additional 1,000 are basically in reserve for the county to use if they need. So as you can see on that map, they are heavily skewed towards the more populated areas, as one would expect, but we did not leave out the less populated areas, even places, you know, northern LA County, outside of Lancaster and Palmdale, and out into Malibu. So, you know, we, we set this up in a manner to make voting easy and accessible for all people. So the next steps, we also, the next steps is basically the county is going through and recruiting these centers. They're also going out and doing further accessibility and, and power testing, make sure that they can serve the uses. We've created a process for the county to keep this database up to, up to date and keep all of the many data layers that went into this process active, so that this is a living, breathing database, and they can update with new vote centers as sites become available and so on. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Laura to explain the rest of the process for them.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Julian. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really did want to go through the process of the vote center and also our vote-by-mail drop-off locations. And as you heard from Julian and his presentation, you know, the Vote Center Placement Project was a multifaceted project that really integrated GIS data, but also made this a very public process, where we gathered community data from all over the county to ensure that where we're putting vote center locations are where people want to vote, to ensure that we are providing voting where people want to vote, where they feel secure, where they feel comfortable. So really making sure that this was a very community-centric process. What we did through this, through Votes, the Vote Center Placement Project, as Julian described, was really gather that list of potential vote center locations. So 1,000 recommended vote center locations from Placeworks, and then, of course, that 1,000 list of backup locations. So as, as we discussed, and as part of the core elements of the EAP, is that list of potential vote center locations. And currently, we're conducting extensive accessibility assessments, as described, making sure that all vote centers are ADA compliant, but also making sure that there are power and network assessments, since a lot of the different technology require power and network, like you see the BMD requires power, and of course, our e-poll books will be connected to a secure network, so we need to ensure that all of these vote centers that we do secure are, are, function and are compliant with our requirements. Also, we want to make sure that we are always accepting feedback from the community on where we should put vote centers. But right now, we are currently racing toward that goal of securing 250 locations for that 10 days before, before Election Day, E-minus 10, and then ramping up as prescribed by the California Voters Choice Act to 1,000 vote centers for E-minus 4. So that's the Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then Tuesday of Election Day, where we'll have the full 1,000 vote centers. An important note to say is that all of the locations that you'll find in the EAP are potential locations, so you have a little less than six hours to provide input on those, on those potential locations, because we really want to make sure that we are receiving feedback on those and have been doing so throughout the EAP process. I do want to touch upon our mobile voting program as well. If you can think about, we do have geographically isolated locations, you know, in our rural areas of LA County. So there we have the potential of utilizing mobile voting or Papa vote centers in those locations as well. We also are very sensitive in thinking about different populations that we do, that we can serve with this agile and very intuitive system. So thinking about seniors, or people experiencing homelessness, or incarcerated voters, or voters like that, where we can actually schedule a time where we can take voting to a location to make it easy and accessible for people to vote on a ballot marking device. It's kind of the things that we're also thinking about, because we are really concerned with making this accessible to all people. And so I also wanted to just say too, and touch upon our vote-by-mail drop-off locations, as Jeff described, there'd be 250 drop box locations all throughout the county. They'll look very similarly to like a library drop-off box or a USPS postal box, but as Jeff mentioned, they will be our boxes that we will be checking regularly and picking up locations. And so that was also a part of, in addition to the Vote Center Placement Project, to be able to look at and assess all of these sites. And so our goal, like I said, is to have permanent and indoor boxes and 250 throughout the, throughout the county. I do also want to touch upon the layout and the vote center layout and staffing. And so you'll see here a sample configuration of a large vote center. And so you'll see that there are 50 ballot marking devices on this configuration. We do have various sizes. So in a small vote center, there'll be 10 ballot marking devices, a medium will have 30, and a large will have 50. Those numbers are approximate, but those are essentially the model of, and the template of our sizes. And so you'll also see that there are different configurations to a vote center, where, you know, we'll have a room, and so we have to create a unique layout to each of these different sites, because we want to maintain privacy and accessibility in all of these different vote centers. And so to balance that, we have to create a unique layout, but also maintain our requirements and ensure that we're also following operational requirements as well. And so you'll see here too, the different staff members. And so people we hear all the time, will we have the staff at each of these vote centers to be able to assist people while they're going through the voting process? And the answer is absolutely, we will. And so to match that small, medium, and large model, we also are going to have a range of staff members, between five to 27 staff members at each of the vote centers. So you'll see on the, on the screen here that they'll, they'll have different roles. And so there'll be a lead member, which will, a lead election worker, who will act as like a supervisor to each of the, each of the, the different clerks. You'll also have check-in clerks, and those will be folks that will be on the e-poll books, who are checking in voters as they come in. We'll also have line monitors. So those will definitely be people who are going to be on the front lines as people come in or standing in line, to alleviate any concerns about the different changes that people may have, so they can answer questions about VSAP, they can answer questions about the ballot marking device, or they can also assist people with making sure that they're in, going towards the right line or going towards getting the right service. We'll also have people that will be line, vote area monitors. So you'll see those, those are the people represented within the ballot marking devices to assist people who are going through the ballot marking device, not hovering over folks while they're going through a process, but if someone had a question, they're easily accessible and ready to help. And so how, you know, who will we be recruiting to be election workers? So the LA County Board of Supervisors passed a motion to recruit county employees to be election workers. And so we'll be using county staff, you know, our own departmental staff, temporary county employees, but of course, definitely still looking towards our community volunteers. We have poll workers who have been poll workers for 40-plus years, 10 years. We want to make sure that we're tapping into their expertise, so recruiting definitely from that pool, and also continuing recruiting for our high school students for them to be able to be election workers as well. And our, if you can imagine, we are going to have extensive training for all of our election workers to be ready and to assist voters while they go through the voting process to handle the new technology. So we'll have extensive training to be able to do that. So moving more toward a full-day model, where people will be getting training over a day to be able to be ready for that. So now, I'm going to toss it over to Monica Flores, back again, to really talk about our commitment to security, which is one of our top priorities here at the RSCC.
Okay. Well, with all of these new systems and all of these new procedures, it's extremely important that we put into place measures that protect the integrity of these, of our elections. So I'm going to finish off today's presentation with, by telling you a little bit about what we're doing to maintain the security of this process. First and foremost, the core of all of this is our paper ballot. As I mentioned, the ballot marking device is used to mark a paper ballot, which is the ballot of record. It is what the, we officially count to tally up our voter results. The ballot marking device is used to mark this paper ballot. The ballot marking device is not connected to the internet or any network. It doesn't retain any votes, as I mentioned before. So this, this combination of these two is what the voter interacts with. And again, that paper ballot is the, what's tallied, it's an audible, human-readable tool that we can use to verify the security of the election. Additionally, we've put in processes to protect the chain of custody, so all of our equipment, the ballots, whether they're marked or unmarked, are, go through a very secure process. We keep track of where they're at, at all times. Additionally, we have put into place security software to protect the security of the solution. So there is So there is intrusion detection and prevention software that's installed. And we have established a network operation center, a security operation center where we monitor all of the activity. If there is an attempt for intrusion, we're able to capture it and stop it before they can get into our system. We have also contracted with third parties to conduct security testing of the various system components. And the Secretary of State themselves, for the certification process, has conducted a lot of testing of the system and continues to test our system. Finally, we coordinate with local law enforcement and federal agencies for the security of our system. So this includes the county sheriffs, FBI, Homeland Security amongst others. So this wraps up the presentation portion of it, and I'm going to turn this back over to Debbie to lead you in the public comment portion of the agenda today.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. So Johnny's got the microphone on if anybody's interested in asking a question. You can ask it from your seat, you can come up here. Whatever you prefer.
I'm Astrid, I'm resident of Covina, and so I just wanted to share some observations from the EAP. This area, it really relies on transit, and I noticed that in the EAP, there isn't as much around the transit hubs. So MetroLink is a really important transit hub for a lot of the area here. There's a station in Covina, so I would encourage maybe an external Dropbox for that location. Also, the metro, Azusa-Citrus, doesn't just serve this immediate area, but a lot of people drive to that station because that's where the metro gold line ends. So I'd also recommend having a Dropbox at the Azusa-Citrus, Azusa Metro Gold Line, and also Irwindale because as the parking lots fill up, people drive up, up the 210 to park at those locations. So again, this area relies really heavily on public transit, and I would encourage more external Drop Boxes along the transit hubs. And currently, I only saw one at Union Station. The other comment I have is there's no breakdown of external versus internal Drop Boxes in the EAP. And so I would encourage to have as many external ones, at least for this area. Again, many people commute from this area and may not really be here during business hours, and so external Drop Boxes, I think, should be encouraged. And again, just a resident, I don't meet with any of the neighborhood groups, but I live here and work here, and so those are the comments I wanted to add. I also submitted public comment, and I want to add one for my grandmother who lives in North Hollywood. And so she is elderly and a voter and loves to vote in person. And so there is a elementary school, Strathern Elementary School, which is the place that she wanted to vote at. It's the closest one to her, she relies on public transit, and so that would really impact the way she votes is if she can go in person. So, thank you. Strathern Elementary School in North Hollywood, it's listed as a potential location. Thanks.
Feedback, that was great. Anybody else? Come on up. Can you state your name for us?
Thank you. Yeah. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Astrid. So, hi, I'm Paul Spencer. I'm an attorney with Disability Rights California. We're the state protection advocacy system for people with disabilities, and I'm an attorney in our Voting Rights Practice Group. We submitted written comments on the EAP, but I briefly wanted to summarize the written comments that Disability Rights California submitted. So first, we'd like to acknowledge the Elections Department. You guys have really committed to getting input from people with disabilities in the VCA implementation process. And you know, we think that's key to actually meeting the accessibility requirements in the law. So thank you, we appreciate it, and we appreciate the open lines of communications we have with your office. So the, in the, the first part of the EAP is the Voter Education and Outreach Plan, which is what the Secretary of State approves. Overall, the plan's pretty good, but there's some of the accessibility requirements that are missing. You know, the first one is that the EAP itself needs to be in an accessible format. And my organization, we've provided some toolkits for how to do that. The, the county has a really good website for voters with disabilities. You have a lot of good information. You might want to include that in the Election Administration Plan, that you have that information available. For remote accessible vote by mail, the EAP needs to include your media plans for how you intend to tell the public about remote accessible vote by mail. So that, that's definitely something that needs to be in there. So for the media and outreach budget, you have a fair amount of detail, but really to assess the voter education and outreach plan, more detail is necessary. And finally, for the education outreach plan, the workshops for voters with disabilities, a description of those workshops needs to be included. You also have to have workshops for limited English proficiency communities, but you at least need to describe the workshops. We also probably envision the county's going to go above the VCA requirements and have more than one workshop, just like you've done, you know, you're having more than one hearing right now, which is great, given the size of the county. So for Section 2, which is the Election Administration Plan, you know, the, the Secretary of State's not approving this, but there are some things that more detail would be helpful, especially because, you know, this is the plan for two years for the county. So it's sort of the public's last opportunity to get to comment on the plan. And one thing in there is that, you know, a lot of the voting rights advocates, or if you're an election law attorney, or, you know, you all in the election staff, you're really familiar with the Election Code 4005 and 4007, but the EAP could probably use a little more explanation over what the requirements are. Like, for example, what factors are required and what factors are something that you're adding in. Another thing that could be included is a figure. You have really good figures and charts in the EAP, but a figure on where mobile vote centers are needed. So the VCA, you know, unique to LA County, also allows you to have some of your four-day vote centers open for less than four days, which is unique to the county. So you get to decide if you choose to do that, but to please take in the needs of voters with disabilities and people that use public transportation, to try to let them have as many voting days as possible. There's also some questions in the EAP about plans for vote by mail. I mean, what's the county's plans after 2024? And also, just for now, for special elections that the county has, does the county intend to do all vote by mail under Section 4005, or do they intend to do the 4007 section? So, and finally, to end on is the vote center, the actual setup of the vote centers. So Disability Rights California and Asian Americans Advancing Justice did a poll monitoring project for the mock election, and we submitted a report to the county. And you know, we included some highlights for that in our comments today, but some of the big things are was the signage for the vote centers, the exterior signage, just needs better signage. One thing for the EAP, you have a layout for large vote centers, but you should also include a diagram for small and medium. And a big takeaway from our poll monitoring project was that the ballot marking devices, which you can see in the corner over there, they were just too close together. They need to be spaced out a little better. So, and the, the final thing was, and this is something in the mock election that we really couldn't assess because the turnout wasn't high enough, but how well can vote centers handle crowds? So in the VCA counties in 2018, most people that voted in person voted on Election Day despite extensive outreach for them to come and vote early. So LA County should probably also expect a heavy rush on Election Day. And in our experience, a large accessibility barrier is heavy crowding in polling locations in vote centers. So if there's anything we can do to prevent that crowding, one thing that would be nice in the AP is if the county could include some of their estimates for how well a vote center can handle crowds and what the turnover is. And, you know, finally, you know, again, thank you for, you know, being open to getting input from the disability community, and my organization appreciates the open line of communication. Thank you.
Any other feedback, thoughts?
Oh, good evening. My name is John Matthews. I'm with the Election Integrity Project California. I'm the LA County Regional Coordinator here. And I have a couple of questions here that, over the last four or five months, I've been trying to get some clarification on. And so each time I come to something like this, I try to glean a little bit more. Do you have any idea when the 1,000 vote centers, the final selection of the 1,000 vote centers will be made public?
So we are currently working on securing all those locations, as you heard today. So we're working on obtaining those signatures and agreements. Our goal is to have a final, goal is to have a final list by the end of this calendar year, so by the end of December.
Okay, okay, that's great. Now, my other, I have like three questions here that I need clarification on, and they have pretty much to do with the processing that takes place during the vote, the voting period. The Drop Boxes that you're going to have for the vote by mail ballots, people that drop those boxes off, I'd like to know who monitors those and how often are they emptied and what is the chain of custody once they're emptied?
So our intention is to pick up the ballots from those Drop Boxes daily. They are, have to, they have to be taken in dual custody, so we would have two of our staff picking those up daily, on a daily basis. Monitoring, it is, it's our staff that will be monitoring those boxes.
Okay, yeah, let's see, the last answer I got was every two to three days.
So that's what's required by law. So the Voters' Choice Act requires that in the first couple of weeks of the voting period, that the boxes are emptied out every two to three days. On the final 11 days of voting, it's daily, but we've made a decision within our office to pick them up daily.
So when the chain of custody now, with those taken out of the vote, out of the Drop Boxes, are they going directly to the registrar's office?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Same-day registration and voting, it's a big issue with us. You have people that are going to be able to register and vote on the same day. I'm curious as to how you're going to identify their eligibility. I understand that you're supposed to be using the e-poll books, but as we have discovered, those books are not accurate. You have people that should have been removed from those polls, you have people that shouldn't be on those, on, on those rolls. And so I'm, I'm kind of wondering how you're going to deal with that. Is the e-poll book going to be based on the database from the California State, or is it going to be vocale?
So vocale is the California database. So what we will be doing is, so on the conditional voter registration, what we do, or same-day voter registration, what we do is we take the, the registration, allow the voter to vote on the ballot marking device, but then that ballot is put into a provisional type of ballot. It's set aside, it's put into the ballot box. And before we count that ballot, the registration has to be verified, processed and verified. So for example, if you are registered in Orange County, we would be able to discover that because we are all going to the central database now, the state database.
Okay. I was just kind of concerned about that because the last time I asked about it, I got the idea that the signature that was going to be used to verify was the one that was put on the touchscreen, and I was thinking, nobody signs a good signature on a touchscreen. And so we were, we were kind of concerned about that. All right, the voter ID, what happens? I went to the mock election down in our area, and I, what I did was I went to one center and I cast my ballot. And then I purposely went to another center and tried to cast my ballot again to see if they would catch it. And they did catch, they said, oh, you've already voted. I said, that's all they want to know. I just want to know if you guys have a way of doing that. But what happens if somebody comes into a vote center and gives my name and address? They flip the screen around, yeah, that's me, they print a ballot, and they cast my ballot, I come in later to vote and find out that I've already voted. How are you going to deal with that?
So as you know, in California law, we don't require ID to vote. What you do is you sign under perjury of law that you are that person. In a situation where you cast about, you come in to cast a ballot, then what we would do is we have you cast a provisional ballot. We have to go back and verify and match the signature. So we would go back and look at the signature that's cast on the, on the electronic poll book. If that looks like the signature doesn't match, but your ballot does match, then, then we, obviously, we cast your ballot. And then...
Okay. And the timeframe that this would take place?
During the campus period, so there's a 30-day period to do all this verification. And then if we do, you know, find that there is an issue, that someone tried to impersonate you, then that's reported to the Department of Justice.
Because one thing that's always gotten in my craw is that we call elections on election night and we still have ballots that haven't been counted.
Yeah, we, we don't call elections on election night.
Well, I know that, I know that, that's, that's just, because of the process, this is the way it works out, I understand that. Let's see, I think that's pretty much it. One other thing, I was just kind of off the wall here, and I don't know if you can answer this. One of the gentlemen earlier spoke about identifying target audiences. How did you do, go about doing that? Why did you do it and who did you target?
So what we've done, and this is kind of throughout this whole process, is we reach out to what we call extreme communities. And we've done this through our design process as well as through our kind of outreach campaign and so forth. We look for those voters who have low turnout and try to reach voters that have a hard time participating in the process. So if we try to reach those voters that traditionally don't participate and have a hard time, within that process, we're going to capture everything in between, right? So if we're targeting, how can we reach those really hard-to-reach communities, then in that process, we're capturing also those easy-to-reach communities. So we've just really, really, again, targeted those voters that have a hard time engaging in the electoral process.
Okay, I just, because every, everything, I've gone to several of the community meetings and stuff, and it really seems like there's this mutual interest in pushing the census and the voting. And I know the census means money to the, to the cities and the districts, and I've kind of, in my mind, just my partisan aspect looks at this and says, well, this is what this whole system is about, is to getting people to vote that are dependent on government funds. And to me, that's kind of, that, to me, taints the system. It's just, to me, has an ulterior motive. So, but I, I thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Yes?
I just want to clarify, you said paper voting, right? It's not like a whole he and chess, is it? Or is it new system or...
You're talking about this system here?
Yes.
Okay, then afterwards, you can come up and try it, but what you do is you put a ballot, a paper ballot in there?
Like take my pen?
Right? She's going to show you. And you vote, and you mark that ballot, and then you cast it. We count that paper ballot.
Got it, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Please. Yes, too.
I actually came just representing myself, but I actually belong to a support group of individuals that are visually impaired or totally blind. So I can't see that map. I think you said something about it displays where the voting centers are going to be, or something's displayed around here showing where the centers are going to be. And even though I can't see that, the first thing that came to my mind was, oh, thank you. I didn't take ballet lessons, so I'm not used to being on my T-shirts. Thank you. First thing I thought of was, uh, lost my train of thought there. First thing I thought of was, gosh, I hope I'll be able to get there to either use the new piece of equipment or get to the spot to drop off my vote by mail ballot if I choose to go that way. And, you know, I either take the bus or I would walk to my local polling place. I'm hoping that we don't have a low turnout of people that have disabilities because they can't get to one of those locations, wherever they're, wherever they are. And that's one of my concerns. So I don't know if you could take to heart and truly think about us that rely on something really close to our neighborhoods, because it doesn't sound like there's very many locations for us to get to.
Great name, by the way. I'm Deborah, as well as you are. So what we did during the PlaceWorks project, when we were selecting locations, there was 14 criteria that we used for a location, and one of it is access to transit. So that's very important to us, and as we've gone through this vote center process, it's, it's a characteristic or a variable that we consider when we're looking at every single vote center. Is there a transport? Is there a way... Is there a way for people to get there that's easy? So that's definitely being considered. And I don't know if Monica wants to add anything to that as the manager, but...
Just in addition to that, also the accessibility of the facility itself is being assessed, so the path of travel to get from the, you know, the transit stop into the door is super important to us. And even one of the criteria was to look at, to see if there's just areas that have heavier concentrations of voters with disability, you know, and that might be influenced by a assisted living center or independent living center, I'm sorry. So those type of facilities may skew, you know, there should be a location close to this facility. And then also, in addition to that, Laura brought up the idea of a mobile vote center. So if there is a particular area where we think that needs a vote center because there isn't an accessible facility nearby, then we can take one of our pop-up mobile vote centers there.
I really applaud you guys for, you know, trying to improve the process. The sad thing is, you have people that live next door to you, and, and, you know, within your communities that have disabilities. So I, you know, that's wonderful that, you know, you're going to reassess this and look at this, you know, but, you know, I, in my heart, I really feel that, and I don't mean to get emotional, but that you're going to leave out some people that really want to cast this vote, and they're not going to be able to get to where they need to get to. And that's wonderful, you have the mobile way of, of getting the equipment there, but in my heart, I really feel that, like myself, you know, I don't want to be out at night, but I felt it was important to be here. I'm usually home when the sun goes down, you know? It's not safe for us to be out there at night. And, anyway. So, anyway, that was, that was my first concern, but the, the last one was, someone mentioned, which I think it's wonderful, but, you know, you're at these locations, you're going to have people, you know, if someone needs assistance, they'll be there and not necessarily really hovering. I know where I live, there was major issues with people hovering to where there were fistfights, you know? Because people that were in line ready to vote were concerned about what was happening. And I'm wondering, you know, with the staff of five to 25 at these different locations, you know, you have a supervisor and the chain of command, you know, all this technology is brand-new, and, you know, some of us that make it to these locations that might need assistance, that have disabilities, you know, maybe working with us a little bit longer, are you going to be able to supervise everything else that's going, going on in that polling site?
Yep, that's, that's a great question. So we've tried to determine the appropriate number of staff to be able to address these issues, but in the case where there is a situation, like you were to say, there is a fistfight broke out, or just some unusual instance, or just something that's unplanned for, we have troubleshooters out on the field that would come and, and respond to it. So they're out, they have an assigned area that they're covering, if something's happening at a particular vote center, we can quickly deploy, you know, a person or two, or more if needed, to address issues like that.
Well, just on that last note, for that, this particular topic, I, you know, I know someone could say, well, I'm just assisting, assisting them, and somebody else in line ready to cast a vote will say, oh no, I could hear them telling them how to vote. That was the concern, that's why the fight broke out, so...
Yeah, would love to hear more feedback on that, if you have particular incidents that happen, that is, that is electioneering and it's against the law. So would love to gather that information if you haven't submitted it to our office yet.
Yeah, well, thank you again for your time, and I applaud all of you again for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Yes?
I had a really quick question. Would it be hours, would it vary by location, or are they all the same in all those centers?
Well, we're assessing that right now. The law under the VCA, we have to be open eight hours, so that's what we're planning to do, and then the traditional 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Election Day.
Got it. May I assume also that staffing levels are going to vary based on those hours as well?
The hours, and depending on if it's a bigger facility or not, depending on how many BMDs are out there, the staffing will adjust. Okay. All right, with that, I wish you a good evening, thank you for coming tonight, and the BMD is here, Laura is just dying to show somebody.